Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, September nine, two thousand and twenty four. Tonight, we have three items for discussion. The first is the Joint Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board Meeting. For this, I'll bring the Landmarks and Heritage Advisor Board Meetings up to the, I want to call it the podium of the dais. I guess we'll call it the table and grab space around one of the microphones, if you will, and we'll go ahead and let you folks introduce yourselves and present your work plan. Mr. Spieth, welcome.
Okay, this is a complicated work plan to discuss. I think I got it today, so if I mess things up, I'm doing the best I can. Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board.
Before you start there, Mr. Spieth, why don't we go ahead and introduce for the record the folks we have present on your committee?
I'm Glenn Spieth, Christina Minetti, Beth Campbell.
Welcome.
And Amelia Escobedo. Oh, okay, okay. Well, I guess we're missing one then. Okay.
She's our staff member.
Liasen is Tristan. Angie Silva is Planning and Public Works Assistant Director. Karen Deveraux is the Administrative Assistant. We meet fourth Thursdays of every month, six P. M., City Hall, American Lake Conference Room. Accomplishments. We've been working on the two thousand and twenty four Historic Preservation Grant. That was for one to three historic markers. And the drafts of those markers are right here. Of course, they're drafts. They're not complete, but you can pass those around. This is roughly what it looks like. It looks like the amount of funds available will only fit two of them. Probably the Lakeview Post Office and the Lakeview Train Station. And I sent my, here we go. Chinese expulsion is kind of still up in the air. It may be a little bit of a sensitive subject. Historical societies say that's mostly a Tacoma thing. However, the Tacoma citizens brought everybody down here to Lakewood, put on a train. They either paid their passage or they went on boxcars to head to San Francisco. So I don't know. Maybe, maybe it's not the right time for that. However, there's been lots of information out there. I believe it's in one of the Lakewood History books. Not in detail, but how much detail can you put on historic marker anyway?
Mr. Brandon Stetter.
Yeah, Mr. Spieth. I, 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 I guess I'm not really clear where exactly these three locations are.
They're all right around one oh six and Lakeview Drive. The post office is on this side of the street. The train station's on the other side. And of course, Chinese expulsion was the Chinese were taken to the train station and put on trains.
So are these sites now developed as commercial properties?
Yeah. Burlington Northland, I think, still owns the property. However, there's a, there's a commercial strip along the tracks. And these markers would, in my opinion, go on close to the right of way. So they're not impinging on on commercial activities.
The general design of markers has been fairly simplistic. It doesn't have a lot to do that. But would you envision that these would have something more explanatory? You know, this is something different than it's in front of a house that's obviously of historic significance. You know, this is a marker that's in a place of where what's there now bears no resemblance whatsoever to what the marker is commemorating.
Well, you know, pretty soon, all those historical locations are going to be almost impossible to find. I have great difficulty in getting a street address. There's nothing in the old phone books. There's nothing in the libraries, and there's very few pictures. I've got pictures of everything but the Chinese expulsion, and I don't know that any pictures even exist of that. Or we want a picture.
I would just say that in my thinking, that of the three sites, the Chinese expulsion site is the one that speaks more loudly for being recognized and being kept in the people's attention to be able to go and do that. And while you say it's a part of Tacoma's history, it's a part of the, you know, it goes back to where we were, but given the emphasis around diversity and equity and, 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 and looking at things, you know, the, you know, we're concerned with the things that happened to Native Americans, okay? And we're making efforts in different parts of the city, but even, you know, in parks to sort of recognize those things and add the historic ports still are coming up looking to do that. So where those things are really not just I shouldn't say this this way, but I will. It's not just a place where some old building once was. It's a, it's a place where something of significance, even if it is something that is of significance that was a, that's, that's a negative to the history of our area being had. But it could go on and, and so I guess that I would someone ask you to reconsider the prioritization amongst those three, if we can only do two, two, to, 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 to tie down as much as we can, you know, the general place of where, or the location of where the Chinese expulsion assemblage of people was done, because I think that is of more important to retain for posterity, okay, somewhat than where there was once an, 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 an early post office. I, I, I'm having trouble with that and that, but that's no longer there, you know? There are all train stations in many places that are maintained, but this one is gone, okay? You know, and, you know, it's, it's, it's now auto repair, commercial site or something. So, you know, I would much rather focus on the other one, and I guess I would ask the committee to sort of relook at that in terms of what is really the intent of a historical preservation, of a historical marker. And to maybe move away from prioritizing buildings to giving some priority to, to events that are nice to recognize events that we're proud of, but it's also important to recognize things that are a reminder of things we're not proud of.
Got it. Yep. Thank you.
Well, one, one problem with the historic markers, there's just very limited space. And a lot of times, like for the post office, there isn't a whole lot of information. And same way with, with the train station. Now, I, I would assume that the, the city would have information on when the building was demolished. But I can't find any records of it, and I haven't had any help. So I don't know whether it happened before cityhood or after. But those are little details that I should add. However, the, the post office was started in eighteen seventy four when the tracks came through. The school desks that were out at Bird School were patent date eighteen seventy four, and I assume that's probably shortly after the train came through or came available only five blocks away or so. But in, in my exploration of getting people to read these things, the Chinese expulsion to them was the least important because it was a lot of Tacoma history. And ours was only because they shoved them on the trains there and sent them south. I, I don't, I don't know. History is hasty to me. So I like whatever happened to be established and documented.
Mr. Spieth, do you have any assistance?
What's that?
With either the State History Museum or the Pierce County Library System that can be of some archival research help?
Well, Lakewood Library's been closed.
But Pierce County Library exists, yeah.
Exploration at the Tacoma Library, Northwest Rome is the one that has the most records. However, a lot of that is not online. And you have to go down there and search and search and search. And without somebody like Gary Reese, who compiled a lot of those histories and street names and so forth, we may have some of his books and writings. However, it doesn't cover everything that is happening around here.
Ms. Minetti had a point too.
I just want to respond to Mr. Brans' comments. I really agree that in terms of human interest, the Chinese expulsion is, should be prioritized. But, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't just a post office or just a train station, you know? Nowadays, post office is like, I mean, who cares, right? I mean, they're practically falling apart and, you know? But at that time, when the train came through and they got a post office, I mean, these were like major, you know, major points in history, you know, that meant that they had made it, right? And they were on the map. And this train station was also important in terms of just generally trains, you know, railways in the, on the West Coast. So I would agree that the Chinese expulsion should be prioritized, but I also agree that the post office and the train station are super important. The problem is that the place where those are today, I mean, like, we don't even know where it is, right? And it's not known a very pedestrian friendly area. So I'm just wondering, does it even make sense to put those plaques there? Because like, who the heck is going to look at them, right? I mean, it would be nice to draw attention to it, but maybe, you know, it has to be done in some, I don't know, some way that attracts more attention than just putting a plaque at the side of the road where nobody walks.
Let me offer two comments and I'll open it up. Three, actually. If, if each of these three historical events or places are of importance, which it sounds as if the committee believes they are, what, what is the cost of a third marker? Just bought, is it like two thousand dollars?
We have a grant for twenty four hundred, I think.
For two.
That's matched by the city.
Okay.
And we're short. We can't do.
I know you're short. How much, how much is it for one? As I'm asking, how much is it for one?
Fifteen, fifteen fifty roughly.
So if we found fifteen fifty somewhere in the budget, that would get you the third one?
Yeah.
Okay. Second question is, when you've got something of significance historically, and there's more information that you can provide on one marker, as you've indicated, what is the, the opportunity these days to actually have a Q. R. Code on it so people who are in the know, they could click it and get really an expanded story?
Yeah.
I think that's something we should look at.
That's true, but it's beyond my technical ability.
Well, that's why we have a committee, yeah.
I don't have access to get that added, at least so far.
We have the ability to do it because we have an amazingly brilliant staff member who's here to assist you. And if that's something the committee wanted to think about doing and provide the expanded information, it seems to me in this day and age, that's a really smart way to go about doing it. And the third thing I'll say, and then I'll open it up. Yeah, Q. R. Code, and she can help out with that. The third thing is, we are in the process of getting some design assistance with a federal grant for what we call the Green Street Loop. And the hope of the Green Street Loop is to make it really a cool linear park that connects Lakewood in many ways. It seems to me, while perhaps not exactly in the right location, maybe if that could encompass some historical spots of interest that these markers provide, you know, wayfinding or an interesting stop along this trail, we might want to start thinking about incorporating those into that Green Street Loop. I'm just throw it out there for an opportunity because you're exactly right. Unless it's in a place of pedestrian accessibility, you know, it has limited utility. So it's just something to think about. Anyway, yes, question, Beth?
More of a comment.
Yeah.
But we have a touring map that we've produced and that we update periodically. And that's one of the places where extra information can be or where people can see where to go on a website. You know, and it could even include the Q. R. Codes, you know, once we figure out how to do all that, but a way to access additional information. Excuse me. So that's, and one of our ongoing projects is just to continue to update that touring map. And so like every time we put in a new marker someplace, they get a little blurb
Yeah.
on the map too, so.
I think Ms. Silva can maybe connect with Ms. Dodsworth because she's coordinating with the Pial tribe on all sorts of cool wayfinding and place making kiosks of interest, if you will, and that likely will have some Q. R. Code capabilities. So it'd be worth checking in-house and who's doing what.
It's a great comment, Mr. Mayor. Sir, we've been coordinating with the Parks Department on, I think the original concept for these markers were to be placed on a large landscaping rock to be located where the committee is recommending, but I think we can expand that to be more holistic and so far, sir.
Absolutely. Did you have a comment, Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I was just on the, a couple things. So it's great ideas, but on the Q. R. Code, you want to make sure that it's not engraved in your bronze piece that you're putting down because those are definitely changeable. So I would make that something where you could change that in and out. And then I've seen a lot of things. You made reference to your touring map. So like, the places, say if it was the location of, I know you said you didn't know where the post office was, but if there's an emblem or something that leads that they would know, and then that would take them to the map. I don't know if I'm making sense with that. It's usually just a plain marker, so it wouldn't have like all your text on it, all that stuff. And then what you said, lead back to a larger space that, like a kiosk or something that people would know about. But it's like those, look for these little marks on a map, something like that.
We can definitely look into the Q. R. Code and the hosting of that. Also typically, Q. R. Codes redirect a visitor back to some type of website landing page. Whether or not that leads to the committee's website or through the touring map that is already available online, those are things we can brainstorm as a group.
Fantastic.
I would kind of suggest also.
Yep, Mr. Pearson, and then I'll have you come back on, Mr. Spieth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I also like the idea of maybe not putting the, the historical markers at the location, but rather in a place that they're going to be more accessible for people who are walking by. And whether it's the Green Street Loop or, you know, a corner, a portion of a park or something in downtown that kind of, but yeah, I always find, I always find myself reading the historical markers and the historical things when they're in some sort of a timeline. And so if you can chain together a timeline, it kind of starts telling the history of, of, you know, what happened in eighteen whatever, and then there's nineteen, and then there was fires, and then there was this, and you can kind of like really start to paint the picture like, wow, you know? And all of this stuff happened, and then nineteen ninety-six, right? Like, it's like, you know, all of this stuff. And that would really be a pretty cool way to do that. I always, the, the one that I thought was particularly done, one of the best ones is the Red Wolf Exhibit at the, the, the zoo, the Point Defiant Zoo. And as you're walking through, you're kind of reading these signs, and they're telling you about, you know, there was two left, and then there was five, and then, you know, this happened, and then, you know? And it tells the whole story about how the Point Defiant Zoo, single-handedly like saved the Red Wolves. And it's, you kind of get through it, and you're like, wow, that was crazy, you know, like? So I just, I like the linear, the timeline. And if we can incorporate some of these, you know, things in, into them along the way, I think that'd be really cool.
Oh, Mr. Laursel, I had a question or a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like all the ideas that are coming forth. One area that might be a good place to display this would be at the Lakewood Sounder Station along the same tracks that run past all this. It's, you know, it's a decent distance south of all three of these locations, but having a place where people are naturally standing and waiting and potentially there to read, to learn about the history would make a lot of sense.
What I've wanted to do for years is to have pictures in the museum. We've got twenty two of these that are done. Or they, there's a couple that haven't been installed yet because we're kind of waiting for rocks. However, it makes an impressive display if you have twenty now five historic markers displayed. Now, the intent was not to put the whole story on the plaque to start with. And I like the Q. R. Code. However, it needs to be a sticker that's relatively permanent. Maybe a metallic one that's, that's pretty toughly attached because we've had vandalism to some of these. The historic marker at the Forts Tillicum Patient's Grave was shot with B. B. Guns. And we replaced that photo. And I hope it's still intact now, but I haven't heard any different. Anyway, with a Q. R. Code, you can go to however much story, additional pictures or this kind of thing, but that takes a lot of effort, especially with twenty-five potential markers.
I think we're just encouraging you to think about it for the current ones that are on the table. At least for starters, the three that you brought forth tonight.
Yeah.
Because they have significant information that might be expanded with the benefit of the Q. R. Code, and then you can go back to the others as time permits over the course of time.
Need help to get that done. It's, it's beyond me, I think. I can, I can help with some of the write-ups, but however.
Didn't we have some money in for the consultant? Or is that money that's long since been spent in years past?
We do have set aside funds for a consultant. The availability of a consultant is one of our challenges. In addition to, I think part of the work plan, why you don't see a lot of accomplishments listed is that we're challenged with non-only quorum at our meaning to progress forward, but also previously before both Planning and Public Works merged as one department, we had a lot of staff vacancies in the former Community Economic Development Department. So we're trying to get our ducks in a row, but also welcome the feedback and how to refine this board itself, but also some of the near-term work items. I think part of the discussion here tonight, we need to be mindful of, the historic markers are based on a scope of work with Pierce County on grant funds. So if we want to mix that up a little bit, we need to negotiate in good faith with the county on the refinement of that scope while we're currently in conversations with them on extending the deadline. Because this work needs to be completed per our contract by the end of this year. Whether we need a little bit more time as part of that conversation right now.
That's helpful to know. Okay. Yes. Microphone there, Ms. Minetti.
Ms. Silva was just saying, I was curious about the quorum problem because I know that there is a certain problem with attendance. But I looked at the, the correspondence that we had since last October when we had the last meeting. And there were nine meetings up to August. We had our last meeting in August, and eight of the nine meetings, in fact, were because of the staff vacancies or whatever the problems were. And there was just one problem with quorum in all of those nine meetings. So I just wanted to make sure that you didn't think that we're just a bunch of flakes who don't attend.
Appreciate that. One last comment, and I'll be quiet, but we had a really good program at the Coffee House in the Park last month, I did toward the end of last month, with Walter Neary, and he's a wealth of information. Obviously, he and Uncle Burger drafted the book on Lakewood History. He may be a resource for you or at least can help direct you to some resources if you need, and he may also be of assistance in actually writing because that's his passion. So it may be worth reaching out to him.
I've been waiting for Walter to retire so I could get him to come back on the Landmarks Board because he was an early member. I, with Jeff Bozloff, helped start the Landmarks Board back when I was president of the Lakewood Historical Society. And I didn't feel it was my point to be on the, on the board while I was on another board anyway. So that eventually, actually, it was the Historical Society that was originally intended to run the Landmarks Board. However, the requirements from the legal department said we had to have two million dollars in professional liability insurance. And that kind of killed the Historical Society from participating directly or contracting. So anyway, to continue.
Yes, sir.
We're looking for opportunities to expand the Historic Streets Recognition Program.
Great.
I have one candidate, and that's Silicon Boulevard, which is used to be Union Avenue. Union used to come down from Tacoma, straight down the hill through Nally Valley. And that was South Tacoma Way in the early days. That's the only one that I've been able to verify recently because that's on a map. One of the early maps, and I don't remember which one, maybe it's a county map, but of that environment. Continue to work with Clover Park School District to incorporate Lakewood history into school curriculum. Implement grants to place additional historic markers throughout the city. I've got a list of probably another seventy-five more potential, and it's difficult to choose because not everybody has the same interest in what history is. But when I started this years ago, Because not everybody has the same interest in what history is. But when I started this years ago, Lakewood had no history, at least for the most part. It wasn't out there to be seen. Implement grant to place historic markers throughout the, okay, we've covered that. Identify future projects that apply to the Pierce County Grant Cycle. Update to Lakewood Touring Map, and I have a current update mainly to, to improve the the timeline with a lot more detail. Things like Fort, early Fort Stilicon, McClellan was here. Sherman was here. Pickett was here. Maybe Grant, because he was in Vancouver in fifty-one and fifty-two, or fifty-three. And of course, the governor of the state of Washington was a, was a ex uh, West Pointer, Isaac Stevens. And uh, he was the one that insisted try and punish Leshai. He wound up going back east to the Civil War, became a brigadier general, and was shot. He was killed in a battle during the Civil War. I have all that information, but uh, that, that's hard to put on markers. Anyway, identify future projects. Okay, we've done that. Work with pretty gritty tours uh, to develop a walking tour. We've been at that for a couple of years, and uh.
Didn't we provide some lodging tax funding?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can you repeat that, sir?
I'm trying to remind council, we provided lodging tax money for that task. I don't recall, but I thought we did.
Don't know that off the top of our head, but we can respond back, sir.
It'd be nice to see that one move from the work plan to the completed plan. At some point, I know it's been talked about for a long time.
Okay, next on the list is explore the use of community landmark designation for the Colonial Center, for Western State, for Rhodesley, Villa Carmen, Flat House, Little Church on the Prairie, Thornwood Castle. Mueller-Harkins Hangar has a historic marker already on it. Tacoma Golf or Country and Golf Club, uh, there's a historic marker out there also. The H Barn, Valero Lanes, Denny's House of Dormants. We have a historic marker for that, but the owner can't decide where he wants to locate it. Whether he wants it attached to the building, which is mostly glass on the front. He doesn't like a rock out in front because cars hit it. So that's been an ongoing problem with that. The Lyddie House in the Stilicon, Lake Stilicon Dam. There is a historic marker at the dam that talks about the, the Griss Mill, which was just a little downstream. Work on recruitment of new members. That's something that's kind of critical. It would be neat to have an archaeologist involved. It's kind of one of my pet projects is going out and digging up some of this stuff that's still around and quickly disappearing. And I think we talked about working on recruitment of new members actively engaged in the city uh, City of Lakewood Youth Council. We have in the past have had one or two people sit in on many of the meetings, but that kind of gets it, it flow, ebbs and flows.
Mr. Brans, Senator.
Yes, with respect to the youth council, and the youth council provides what they're currently provided as liaisons to committees such as yours, being able to go and do that, and it's been experienced that it, for those committees that have given their liaisons an active role, they then have gotten consistent participation and contributions to, to, to the work to be able to go and do that. And at least one, maybe if not two, we uh, have promoted the liaison to being an actual member and voting member of, of, of a committee, and I would suggest that that getting a regularly engaged youth council member, if the, if we were to give them status as a member, that that could help you with your quorum issue in that you, you'd still need three for a quorum, but you'd have five people uh, to try to get three from, to be able to go and do that. And so I think we could entertain that if you were wanting to do that. I think the, the youth council has just organized itself, so I don't know if they've identified a liaison or liaisons to you. But if you um, you know, would look to do that, and then if you give them a meaningful role, I think you'd get an actively contributing person.
Yeah, I have tried that uh, in the past. I like to get youth council people that are interested in history. Sometimes they aren't, sometimes they are. So you can try and get them involved in really participating. However, being on the, being on the uh, board is an extra incentive, which I think is a good idea. Uh, continuing on.
However, I don't think that would require some action by us to, to do that for that number. So you, you need to come back to us if you decide you really want us to do that.
And we, yeah, we want to.
What else can, can we just go ahead and appoint the members, or is there a?
I get to appoint and these folks get to confirm. So if you have some names you want to put forward and they want to make an application, absolutely, I'd be happy to do that. Yep, we'll just kind of roll through this as best we can here.
Okay, update to Lakewood History and Historic Preservation Website. I don't think I've ever seen that, that I can remember, but uh, I'll look for it. Work with Lakewood Gardens and expansion modification to existing structures, and I thought by now that would have been done because we approved changes to their structure a couple of years ago. And uh, that usually doesn't take this long. In consultation with Communications Director, develop relevant historic videos to place on the city's website. We do have a video which was produced by the Landmarks Board. Uh, I think it's not quite an hour, but it's a DVD, and uh, that, that's been available for quite a few years now. A year ago, when we discussed our activities, I uh, I was stressing that we, we need to get some items, local items, local historic items in the Lakewood Museum. Mike Avi did all kinds of exploration at Fort Stilicon. That's what Jennifer Shrek is looking into. However, there are lots of historical sites in Lakewood that Mike Avi was involved with. There was uh, native remains at the end of Phillips Road. It was probably somebody buried it up in the trees. Five or six hundred years later, they, they're down on the not too deep surface of the, of the thing, and um, it took me a while to run across the what I call Phillips Road bones. I'm not interested in having the bones in the museum, however, there's a story that could be there. And maybe there was artifacts with it. We have tried for years to get native artifacts in the museum. I have lots of things that were displayable, but they're not local provenance. Except I do have a lot of Northwest Indian arrowheads, and we have one one uh, hand axe that came from Dolly Madison uh, road out by American Lake. A guy found it in his yard, brought it in to me.
Well, there's lots of great.
So that's on display in the, in the museum. But those are the kinds of things I like to show. I like to have something that's, that is really from the time, rather than just have a bunch of pictures.
Yep.
Pictures don't show me a lot unless there's, you know, other things that aren't available, but uh.
We, we kind of want to focus just tonight on the landmarks and heritage portion, and there's lots of work that can be done to history museum, but the board's focus is a little bit more narrow than that. I believe.
So that uh, covers what we, we're gonna review today.
Got it. Any, thank you, Mr. Speed. Any other contributions from the committee members? My only additional question on the work plan, since we're focused on the work plan and landmark designations. Since we met last, the county has obtained ownership over the uh, old cemetery off of Washington Boulevard. City got, excuse me, the county obtained from the county, or excuse me, the city obtained from the county. Thank you.
That's the Masonic.
Uh, I don't know, there, there may be some Masonic people, but it's the old historic.
Or the old settler cemetery.
Yes, the old settler.
There's an historic marker out there, plus a
So it's hard to take care of.
One of the volunteers put up.
Okay, very good. But it might be something for the nitty-gritty tour plan whenever that gets up and running. So since we just took it over this last year. Now that we own it. Any other questions at all? Well, we appreciate your work as always, and we're apologetic that we don't have as many members to flesh out your ranks, but maybe we can help work on that and encourage folks to apply that express interest in citizen advisory boards and commissions, certainly because it's a worthwhile endeavor. Absolutely. Anything else we could do to order? Well, very good. Well, thank you again. We appreciate it. Okay, so next, we're gonna turn to our review of the second quarter financial report. And for this, we'll have our deputy city manager, Ms. Kraus.
Thank you. We are not broke.
Say again?
I said, we are not broke. I'm getting the question.
Oh, oh, very nice. That's always, that's a nice opener. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Apparently I need to find another fifteen hundred hours for a third uh.
I think that's, that's good.
Rock.
Yes, no. So as you know, we're working on the twenty-five and twenty-six budget along with the quarterlies and such. And so I really want to just focus on page seven and eight, which is the ju, uh, summary of the general and street fund. Yeah. So just looking at where we were uh, in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So our revenues are over, um, and I'm looking at the second to the right column. So our twenty twenty-four revenues exceed our twenty twenty-three year-to-date actuals by two point, almost two point eight million dollars. And compared to the budget, we're up by two point five million. So in the areas that are exceeding our budget estimate, most of that is coming from our development services and fees. So we got some permit um, revenues from Western State Hospital that is contributing to a lot of that. But then we're also seeing increases in sales tax of just over three hundred thousand. Our gambling tax has decreased, so essentially, we're taking some of the sales tax to cover some of the shortages and other areas. Other areas that are seeing uh, decrease is our municipal court, but we've seen that as a trend and it continues today. And then our miscellaneous and other uh, revenues is up by five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And a lot of that has to do with the interest earnings, but it also include the opioid monies that we received. And um, they're put in as the ongoing revenue because we're anticipating to get those for a number of years.
Sure. So you're treating those as a general fund?
Yes, but we've also earmarked it as an expenditure. So equal amounts coming in and out. So even though I'm showing it as revenues, it's also coming out as expenditures. Yeah. So it's not being used to subsidize our operations.
Cause we put it in a special revenue, we're holding it.
Yes.
We're waiting. Which, which, right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. On the expenditure side, um, it's going to look sort of alarming, but I have explanations for that. On the expenditure side, we're exceeding the year-to-date budget by nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. And why I started off with, you know, we're working on the twenty-five and twenty-six budget is because we're also looking at what our year-end twenty twenty-four should look like. So I added a page, um, on the following page that gives an explanation of the expenditure uh, variances from where we are as a second quarter compared to where we should be based on the budget. But keep in mind, and I'll speak mostly to, uh, I'll, I'll start off with the largest one, which is the police. So police is over their budget by nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The personnel cost increased by seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, and that's because we filled all of the positions. So recall that the city council in the twenty-three and twenty-four budget, we reduced funding for four positions, but we maintained them as authorized. So as part of the year-end estimate, I captured the uh, expenditures for those four positions that weren't funded. So any of the overages that you're seeing, I've captured for the year-end estimate, and that year-end estimate for twenty-four rolls into our twenty-five and twenty-six budget. So that's the good news.
I have a question on that. So if they're budgeted positions and we're just filling in the authorized positions. The, the real cost did increase, but not from what was budgeted per se, if they were budgeted positions.
Yes, they're budgeted positions, but they didn't have funding attached to them. So so in order for us to still be on target, going into the twenty-five and twenty-six budget, I've taken into consideration that we've filled all of the positions that have been authorized to be filled.
Okay.
So we're not going to have a shortfall because we filled those positions.
No, I get that.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Brans, Senator.
I, I, I'm just trying to get my head around the wording. Something is budgeted.
It should be funded.
But it's not, doesn't have funding. If it doesn't have funding, to me, that sounds like it isn't budgeted. Uh, so I'm, I'm trying to decide, what is, what does it mean, budgeted but not funded?
So in many times, so if you recall, the police department hasn't filled all of their positions over the years. There's always some position vacancies. And so it's common for cities to not completely budget every single position, recognizing that there will be some position vacancies throughout the year. And that's what we're seeing. We saw in previous years, but in actuality, our new chief has filled all of the positions. So that's uh, I, I would say that's a positive because it's been very difficult to fill positions, um, especially in this line of work, I guess.
So, so basically, we have a table of positions that, that are, that the city has authorized, but we've, but we, in the budgeting process, we've only funded a certain number of them, and some of them. A certain number of them, and some of them, they're still on the books as a needed position. And I and I guess I wouldn't describe that as a budgeted position. I'd describe it as a as a. As as an authorized or approved or something like that. It just said, budgeted and funded seems to mean the same thing to me. Um yeah, if we can look, look, look to do that. Okay, anyway. He said, I'm I'm clear with 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 what you, what 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 you, what what you meant. I just. Would think that if that was, that same language was used to the community.
Yeah.
They would be in the same confusion than I was.
Yeah, so thanks for that. We'll take that into consideration for future.
I would see the differential personally in budgeted versus actual.
Yeah.
Because if you budgeted, but if we didn't fill them, we had the salary savings, and the actual would obviously be a lesser number.
Yeah, I'll take that into consideration in future presentations.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so that was the biggest variance. Um the other variances are um some minor amounts for city council. Those have been taken into consideration. That's the independent salary commission. And then there are some timing of uh payments as well. On the city manager side, we have some new people. So when we budgeted in twenty twenty two for twenty three and twenty four. They didn't necessarily fill the spots in where we anticipated, especially if it was a vacant position. Those have also been addressed as part of the year-end budget, uh year-end estimates for twenty twenty four. On municipal court, um there is a, just overall, there is a increase. And where we're seeing increases are um in the areas of pro temp judge. So we're using more pro temp judges than we had anticipated. And pro temp judges are just filling in for when the uh the primary judge, our judge is not there. And then there's also been an increase of um spending on the interpreter fees. On the administrative services side, which also includes the public defender. It's seventy one thousand under budget, but public defender is also down, and that's due to some timing of the payments. And then there's some salary um savings just because we also have new positions. So we've accounted for. You know, they were placed at a lower level as um with, you know, less experience or less longevity here. And then just travel and training um savings, um since the city manager has put a pause on non-essential spending. So you'll see some of that. On the legal and human resources department, eighty seven thousand under budget, and that's due to some position vacancies. And then also some travel and training um pause for non-essential expenditures. Parks, Recreation and Community Services. So Parks and Recreation has two sides. They have the um. The general fund component and then also the operations and maintenance in the street fund. And they're thirty six thousand dollars over budget. And you can see that there's a thirty six thousand dollar. Well, you can't see it. I looked at it, but there's a thirty six thousand increase um in personnel. However, there's a corresponding decrease on the operations and maintenance. So that just tells me that they shuffled people around for, based on their need compared to what was budgeted. And then um there's also a decrease for senior center lease. Um that sixty thousand plus is in the budget, but we're not spending it. So that's part of the uh. Offsetting some of the increases. And then our swim assessments increased by twelve thousand. And this is due to the increases for Fort Silicon Park um swim fees increase. And that's also taken into consideration uh for future budgets. On planning and public works, the budget is over by three hundred and eighty seven thousand. But we also have taken in more revenues. Um so you you see permit fees are up by over two million dollars. That's helping to pay for some of these increases here. And then on the street engineering services is below by two hundred and ninety five thousand. Operating um operations personnel is down by a hundred and twenty one thousand. And then they have some savings in supplies. And then just overall, street lighting, electricity is down by sixty five thousand dollars. Due to reduced number of traffic signals. So that that is explanation of all the um variances.
Uh Mr. Lawrence Allen and then Mr. Brand Center.
Uh thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh I had a quick question on the revenue side. There's a really big spike in the development service fees for community, community economic development, right? It went up two hundred and sixty percent. I may have missed if you explained it. Could you?
Oh, yes, we received um the permit fees from Western State Hospital, and that was, I want to say like one point nine million or so.
So if you look at the average there, what it would be without that spike. We'd be down, you know, at least a million plus. Without that spike.
Well, we would still be up, what, by three hundred thousand in just the development services.
But that particular line item would be surely down.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Brand Center.
Regarding the street lighting figure that's highlighted under the, your paragraph under uh uh. Street operations and engineering. So it's that that it's down sixty five K. Compared to the, what was budgeted. And that that is so. But but we've combined the cost of running streetlights with. Traffic signals. That's considered the same. Same pot of money.
I'm sorry, with what?
You know, you said that it 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 says that the street lighting and electricity is down sixty five K. Due to having a reduced number of traffic signals, which are different than streetlights. But but in the budget world, we budget that one pot of money for both. Running the traffic signals as well as running the streetlights.
Um I I they are two separate line items.
So. How much of the sixty five K savings is due to the fact that we have. Permanently eliminated some traffic signals.
I'll have to get back. I see what you're looking at. I use the term street lighting, electricity for the number of signals. So let me. Let me get back on that one.
Okay, and I guess if if it's traffic signals, it seems like that those are. In some ways somewhat permanent. On the other hand, in this particular year, we were supposed to be doing some. Adding streetlights, but that. We haven't been able to actually execute. The plan for adding streetlights that we were supposed to add this year. Yet, because that that had to do with a contract with the utility companies that they 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 couldn't do it. That that's it's going off. And then the other thing about that funding is. Some of the savings on streetlights was supposed to be being used on some debt service. For a project to convert lights from. Something to LEDs or doing that. And then we also had the impact of we had a pilot project. Where we were trying to reduce electricity cost by making the streetlights dimmer. And we did that. I think that the pilot area was over near Fort Silicon Park, being able to go and do that. But did that contribute to the savings or or is it made, and has it resulted in a determination to expand the. Dimming of streetlights throughout the city to further increase this cost. I just. It kind of, kind of seems to be of. Looks like there's some potential for some savings, but I'm not sure what, where we're saving it.
Yes. Those are good questions. I do believe that I might have used the same language on a couple of different items. The streetlights that we converted to LED from the local program, we did reduce their budget to accommodate the debt service that is associated with it. The dimming of the um streetlights, I I know that we were doing a pilot program. I haven't seen the results of that. And I haven't actually looked for it. So I will uh follow up and provide a response to the city manager.
Did you have another comment?
Uh yeah, just a quick comment. I would also expect that our street or our traffic lights have gone down due to all the roundabouts we put in on Washington Boulevard.
You probably could salvage the entire budget with that. So one one quick comment is I'm going back to the police paragraph. I think the answer is. Uh in my own mind, that we authorize the manager to overhire. The authorized positions, and that is why we prob, personal costs probably increased due to the. Filing of additional positions over authorized.
Yeah, that is part of that too, the over hires.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably the basis flag. Thanks. Anything else on that page, or did you want to go to the next one?
I didn't have anything else. Um oh, actually, I should turn your attention to um. The cost recovery, just because we always cover the cost recovery. So just going back to how much we received in the permits. And I'm gonna uh, I will get there. It is on page forty five. Let's see, let me get to page forty five.
Get there.
It'll be either page forty five or the study session packet, page forty nine. And I just want to highlight that on development services, because we did receive that huge amount. For Western State Hospital, the recovery ratio year-to-date is a hundred and seventy seven percent. But we received that money um upfront. There will be additional expenditures throughout the year. But looking at the five-year average recovery ratio um for the completed years, two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty three. The recovery uh ratio is ninety one percent. But looking at it for a year-to-date through June of twenty twenty four. We are actually at a hundred and six percent. Um but remember, we still have expenditures uh for the next six months. And so we have on average have, over that period of time, have been uh to the good. A forty two thousand dollars. I'm expecting these numbers to level. So.
There's lots, and we could spend legitimately some additional time, a couple of hours, because the detail here is fantastic. Uh it's very transparent. I mean, you go from the the outstanding balance in the tree fund, which is great. To the detail, I always love to see on where the retail sales tax. Is generated geographically in the city and the different little business locales. I think that's. Something that other jurisdictions don't do to the extent you guys do. And I think it's fantastic to get that level of detail. Uh that helps probably our economic development folks and their planning and their their work. So thank you for all the good work on this.
And then while we're on cost recovery, on page eighty seven of the study session packet, I just want to highlight that parks is on target. Um the recovery ratio is forty five percent. They're currently at forty six percent for the um. First two months or two quarters.
That's great. Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miss Kraus, just go down a a little bit there from. The one you just said eighty seven and go down to parks, uh Park CIP Fund three oh one.
Which is on page ninety one.
Okay.
So um. Just a question on on kind of how we budget. Total expenditures budgeted fourteen million, one ninety, six fifty one. We spent a little over two and a half million. Um I know there's some projects in the work, but are you anticipating that most of these? Items will be carried forward in to next year?
A lot of items in capital projects will typically be carried over because they occur over a number of years. Um if there's any projects that are closed out or that are completed, we'll close them out. But I am anticipating. Some carryover. The amount of carryover, I couldn't tell you at this point.
Yeah, because I don't know which ones are under construction right now. I saw something about, well, never mind. Just we catch glimpses of it through the, through information we get, but there's other items and I'm, so. When we put this budget together, we it it was kind of playing to perfect, right? To like, these things could possibly get done in the biennium.
Yes.
But chances, okay. We're not behind on any of these that we know of in a measurable way.
Um I think if we were behind in a measurable way, you would have heard about it.
Okay.
Um I know that the department directors um keep the city manager at rest, and they do have a project schedule. And um when he meets with them, he will ask about their projects.
And the the REIT looks like, and that's on the next page on ninety two in our packet. It seems to be holding together, I mean, considering that there's not much in the way of refinancing activity. This is actually pretty good. The REIT is a little lower than last year, but hanging in there and. And it's actually over budget. So we're we're okay. You're not anticipating that going into the next. Biennium will have to reduce capital expenditures.
I I don't think so. Um you know, I just looked at it and I haven't had a chance to pull it all together. But for the August distribution, our preliminary number um. In this is we expect to receive about a hundred and fifty thousand. It actually came in at about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Good.
Um and I believe that interest rates are coming down. They're not coming down a whole lot, but it is coming down slowly.
Thank you.
Sure.
I had a question on that page that Mr. Boki referred you to. It's ninety one on the CIP, Park CIP. And just scratching my head about the item property acquisition and demolition near Washington Park. You know what that is? For two hundred and ninety thousand, it does not ring a bell to me.
Uh not right off the top of my head.
Okay.
But I will follow up with that.
There's a lot of these that have been perking, so hopefully we'll get a little update on where we are by the end of the year, because you know the.
Yeah.
Should be lots of stuff in process. The TENS are logged deal, the. Parks sign, you know, the applying.
So this is through um.
Yeah.
Second quarter for June, so I'm expecting that there would be some invoices.
Lots of updates probably in the next quarter. Mr. Brand Center.
Yeah, yeah, I I do think that at Washington Park at the time, there were, one point in time, the CIP. Called for acquiring a property or perhaps two properties that fronted Military Road between the park and Military Road. That were subject to code enforcement action.
That's right.
Uh and potential uh. Abeyment and trying to do them, but I don't think that that we were able to finalize those.
Okay.
It was, but it was expand the park out, boundary the park out all the way to Military Road where there were two. Just somewhat distressed properties.
Okay.
Occupying the space.
Very good. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Well, it was quite a lot. Thank you. I appreciate it. Good, good work as always.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. The remaining balance of the thirteen hundred page packet belongs to our planning manager Tiffany Spear to provide us with a. Twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic review of the review, I think.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh this will actually be as brief as you would like it to be, because we're really just focused on potential amendments that the council may want to discuss. Uh you are scheduled at this point to take final action next Monday night, but of course, if you need more time, you make that decision at the time. But if you would jump to this evening to page fifty and fifty one of the staff report. Uh you will see two things that I was aware of based on your discussions so far.
Let us get there just.
Sure.
Yeah. Of the staff report, which is going to be, I'll get there and I'll help people figure out where it is here. Fifty and fifty two of the staff report are. Uh two oh five, two oh four, two oh five-ish of our packet. Oops. Every time I touch this, it leaves out.
It's page fifty and fifty one of the staff report, which as the mayor just said, I think is two oh something.
Three, yeah, it turns to two oh three. There you go. Thank you.
All right, and bear with me as I get there as well. Sure. Okay, page two oh three of the actual report.
The packet.
Of the packet.
Yep.
Learn something every day. Thank you. Okay, so uh what you see first of all are two highlighted suggested edits that council member Bokey raised. Uh, several meetings ago, and that relate to uh preservation of shoreline properties within the city. First is a suggested change under the uh natural environment policy three. Uh, there's a suggested fourth sub element there, retain current and future city ownership of shorelines and shorelands. And then jumping to uh natural environment policy seven, adding a second part to sentence for the seven point two. Which is similar to language, but saying um including retaining current and future city ownership of shorelines and shorelands. And I think Mr. Bokey may have something else to add there.
Yeah, I think I mentioned this um. Prior on on these two items at a at a at a previous meeting and um. I'm also gonna look at some language that. That encourages the city to pursue funding through the Pierce County Conservation Futures Program and applicable state and federal programs. To purchase shoreline, shorelands and other environmentally critical areas.
Say it again. This suggested language?
Yeah.
And there, yeah, please say it again there.
Pursue funding through the Pierce County Conservation Futures Program and applicable state and federal programs. To purchase shorelines, shorelands and other environmentally critical areas. So we've done this. On Clover Creek to to an extent. At at the park, so um. Uh, to to in- increase our ownership of the and protection of the Clover Creek. So that's another item that. I'm noodling on and I'll I'll send that to staff.
Let me throw out just a question to council on proposed N E three point four. So, you know, take the Hundredth Street thing completely off the list for purposes of the conversation. In the two thousand nine street ends report, there talked about a couple of other street ends. Uh, that were just topographically challenging. And at one point in time, there was a discussion then, we briefly chatted about it in twenty twenty three, but that doesn't necessarily bind us. Because we made no formal ordinance or resolutions. But do we want to bind future councils from ever getting rid of something that is completely. I don't want to say worthless, but not feasible in lieu of using resources to enhance. The same public body of water. I'm thinking about some of these things that are just like crazy, hilly. Challenging and I I get the point of enhancing as best we can of access throughout the city, but there's some. Street ends from our twenty years of working on the street end thing that may never ever be developed for any number of good reasons. And I wouldn't want to bind future councils' hands here by allowing them to maybe look at it in five years, ten years and maybe say. Maybe it's time that we take the resources from that and put it toward expanding somewhere else. I just throw that out there. Yeah.
I uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Bokey. I I think my perspective is putting some verbiage in there that we have have no net loss for any specific body of water. So if we were vacating a street end because it was undevelopable on a given lake, we'd want to increase our footprint. Of city space on that lake by at least the same amount of linear footage somewhere else.
I see what I see what you're saying and I I'm not opposed to that. There there's some part of me that says. Quality can be better than quantity on occasion, based on how our lakes are utilized. So I'm not opposed to that in concept, but I think sometimes. The extra, the extra foot frontage. Isn't necessarily the be all and end all. If we do a better job of maintaining and expanding the frontage. With amenities that we have, that's just my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I I generally agree with your comments on that. I I think that my, you know. Theory or position on on regulations or, you know, we have, we have state regulations, we have to abide by. If we can do that and leave ourselves open to, you know, being flexible with things that may make sense in the future that. You know, not pigeonholing us into uh, you know, a specific thing that we can't. Move out of really that, you know, if we wanted to say no net loss, well, no net loss is easy to say and it's harder to do. Because what you're talking about is, okay, you give, you know, we sell fifty, a hundred feet of of shoreline and. On a street end, it's really difficult to develop. Well, it's difficult to develop for anyone, a house or whatever, and then we're looking at. Buying another shoreline property that's nicer and easier to develop. Well, there's a premium on that. That doesn't really. Those don't correlate as, okay, we're gonna spend save, you know, spend this or sell this and spend this. It doesn't, those aren't apples to apples. And 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 I don't. Really agree with the current street end policy as a whole of trying to improve all of them. I I think that there's a lot of them that, or some of them that really aren't feasible to improve. Um. I don't necessarily agree with the two thousand nine report of which ones are feasible or I'd like to revisit that. Um, to see which ones are maybe more feasible, but my opinion is like, you know, pick a handful. That make a lot of sense and put effort towards actually improving those. And get rid of the ones that don't make sense, that aren't very feasible. And, you know, having, sitting on street ends and doing nothing is like. Almost the worst thing. Like now we're just, we have these resources here that aren't really being used. We're not improving them. There, no one can really use them that much. You can kind of snake through some weeds and like do some fishing maybe, but they're not cleared. They're not, you know, open for access. They're called access, but they're not really access.
Yeah.
Um, so improve a handful of street ends and get rid of the ones that that don't, you know. That don't fit the bill for improving, but in order to do that, that would, you know, this comment here. About retaining all, you know, that would go against that. So that's, I I'm not really for that comment. And then I don't really understand what the future city ownership, that is hard for me to comprehend. What does that really mean?
Yeah, Mr. Bokey. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Okay, so se- several items. Number one, this doesn't. Obviate the the ability of the city to improve the uh street ends. All the street ends can be improved, whatever street ends we want to improve. What it does take off the board and it makes it easier for future councils is they don't have to go through what we're going through right now. Uh, see, because essentially if you leave that door open, that we are willing to sell street ends. Then they're all for sale. Not not any of them. All of them are for sale until you develop them, right? We're on a twenty something year plan to improve ten of them. We may never improve those other lots, but as you pointed out, Councilmember Pearson, some of them aren't worth much. I mean, we could sell all of them right now and it wouldn't pay for much in the way as a percentage of the total. Um, for Edgewater Park, right? Everyone was like, oh, it'll go pay for Edgewater Park and make all these improvements. It doesn't come, the the one that we're talking about doesn't, you know, and the number that they've been discussing. Doesn't come close to covering any of the costs of that. So as long as we leave this door open. That some of them, someday we may fix some of them, others we may not, they're all for sale. And this, this takes it off the board. This just says, we're done talking about it. And this is, this is why I think it's, not only does it relieve future councils of that. The R C W allows the cities to sell, allows them. It's a may, not a shall. It completely restricts the counties from selling them. Counties cannot sell them. And every legislative session, when they do the budget, the legislature sets money aside and sends out grants. And they have programs that'll, that goes to buy tidelands and shorelines. The tide in the state of Washington, pardon the pun, is to purchasing and improving public access. We probably, a- and I feel relatively confident tonight to say that we are the only. Entity probably in the state of Washington that's actively looking to sell street ends or any property on any body of water. So. We're swimming against the tide on this by saying, yeah, they're they're available for sale. We relieve future councils from having to go through what we've been going through on this. Where there's accusations being made, well, what is for sale? Why, why don't you guys fix this? Why don't you, we've got, it's a twenty year plan, a twenty five year plan. Ten years from now, there's gonna be people with that same complaint. Why haven't you fixed this? Well, it's the plan. So I just think it's time to say, as a policy, we're not selling anymore. We're, we're done selling these parcels. Um, I think we should be embarrassed by our sale on the American Lake property. Because it was developable. It, some, somebody put a trail on it and we were told it was, couldn't be used. Um, so we walked away with some money, threw it in another park for an improvement. Again, partial payment on that. So the money on the street ends is never gonna pay for much in the way of park improvements. Um, you know, a couple of these, the sale will barely buy a park bench, right? There's, there's one on Hollyhedge. It's. I don't know what it's worth. Not worth much.
No, no, no.
We sell it, okay, we can put it on a park bench somewhere. Is that a good use? I I don't, I don't think so. But mainly, I think we're on the wrong side of history by looking to sell parcels on water. To. This frees up future councils from having to worry about it.
Well, what I might suggest, at least what I might be more comfortable with, is maybe something less than an absolute known net loss approach. Maybe a comma at the end of that that says as reasonably feasible. You know, yeah, it leaves the door a little bit open, but it doesn't bind future councils necessarily. The other thing I'm I'm a bit concerned about on the known net loss thing unless there's city ownership. One could foresee exactly what we're doing currently, which is. Uh, the partnership with Camp Murray and. The master plan creation and development, frankly, at city expense of a significant. Uh, access to American Lake, not owned by the city of Lakewood. And so that's an example where, you know. It's not city-owned shoreline or shoreline. It is. Property owned by the state of Washington that we're gonna be a good steward of. So maybe it would be city ownership and stewardship. Or steward, ownership and or stewardship of shorelands and and shorelands there, uh, given that example. So those are just my thoughts. I I appreciate and respect where you're coming from to kind of get this thing done and out of our hair, so to speak. So it doesn't become uh an issue like I mentioned, kicking the can down the road. None of us want to do that. But I I'm hesitant to completely bind people from something that may be reasonably feasible or desirable down the road. Mr. Branson.
I I agree with Mr. Bokey's intent of saying if we have. Uh, shoreline, even if it's long-term developable for public use, uh, and I'm. I tend to think that. We need to define our areas, our our definition of public use to not be so grand. As our, as our, as our street end study and and looked at to be able to go and do that. But that some level of public use that it actually is valued by the community can be. Can be, can be done with, essentially with maintenance. Um, and 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 I would be a proponent of looking at it at. Doing and, you know, you know, an adopt the SWAT program for city waterfront sites. Which maybe is an amendment that could be placed into as a matter of policy of where. Where, 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 where appropriate at al- allowing a, you know, you know. You know, service clubs or other, other, other entities to to to. To maintain or limited use some for for access to do that. I think we did and we saw a, in two thousand twenty three, uh. Uh, the the Parks Department did a really good job of what could be. Yeah, uh, uh, somewhat, now I I see it perhaps more utopian. Evolution of all the street ends that that are there to be able to go and do that. Um, I I I, it may be that we would want to look at. But just given the, the fact that we're looking to bring under city stewardship or city lease or something like that. Uh, a significant number of linear feet on American Lake. That a policy that talks about not having a net loss of. Linear feet of shoreline, but not eliminating it to specifically body by water. To be able to good do that, that that that's our policy. I think another thing that's a policy void on our part that we've neglected, and so we deal with it every time it comes up. Is that we, we have not had a policy nor an effort to reduce encroachment on city-owned. Waterfront property. You know, we, you know, we, we actually. Have have addressed it that I can recall since the time I've been on the council. Three times, including the the one we have under consideration now. Uh, and there it was, but we know that there are other encroachments in multiple places, but we're not. Being proactive in terms of looking at at doing it and many of the encroachments. Aren't actually of the shoreline themselves. They're, 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 they're back off of the shoreline and that some sort of boundary adjustments. That that wouldn't affect the amount of shoreline that the city has that could be done are are. Are are possible, but they ought to be explored proactively upfront. Okay, because I I worry that if we just say, okay, we're never gonna sell anything to to be able to go and do that. That that extrapolates into, and we're never gonna do anything about any encroachments that are on them either. Um, you know, we kind of need to do both. Um, so some wording that would allow for that.
Get some flexibility.
The other, the other thing is that we have some uh, city stewardship of some shorelines. And I think the most prolific thing is in the Flet Creek Wetland. Where what we did is that we've acquired conservation easements. Of uh, the setback area in those wetlands and that, and I understood it was done so that. The total size of the owner's property stayed the same, so he can. On the development portion of it, it became a percentage of his property that he could do things, but but it's not going to affect the. The the wetlands up there and down the bed. And so there are strategies other than. Just having something or trying to buy something that we tried to do on Gravel Lake and we're. Not not able to do, but but which, cause, cause outright purchase of waterfront property is always going to be. Difficult, perhaps not impossible, um, but uh, never inexpensive. Um, that, but that we also can look at where we have shoreline that is in. Public ownership of entities other than than us of. Accepting the role of stewards of those shorelines, which I think we. accepting the role of stewards of those shorelines, which I think we have, we can convince ourselves and we have evidence of that we sometimes do a better job than, than other entities uh, in terms of, of being able to go and do that.
So how about, do we want to maybe tweak NE 7.2 or NE 3.4 N period or NE, not NE, A and Y, but NE with the term, um, retain and enhance current and future city ownership of shorelines and shorelands, comma, as reasonably feasible or wherever feasible?
Well, I'd certainly like to see something that said, increase city ownership or stewardship.
Yeah.
Of shoreline footage. That, that allows for some give and take. Okay. Um, I think, uh, and, and then I'd like to perhaps be a separate place somewhere else and, because I'm not sure why this, which, does this particular thing would fit under the water quality policy goal?
Right.
It seemed that there maybe there is another goal of where that would, 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 uh, fit even moving the, the NE 7.2.
Well, three percent.
Uh, you know, uh,
Public access.
Making a, leave it, it's certainly stated, but put in any three-point something else up there in the terms of, 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 of doing that. Cause the, the whole idea of water quality is, is, is a whole different endeavor of, 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 of things that goes on. So I, so I like the idea of the statement to say, we're going to do it, but we're but we're doing it for purposes of public access. And so it should be up in the, the, the NE 3 piece instead of in the NE 7. My, that, that would be my thought where, where, where I would put it. And, um, I think, I think ownership and stewardship, I think stewardship is a good word to have to where we want to do that. And it shouldn't be, and it should be, we should always be looking to increase the amount of stewardship we have over land with the idea that it is for purposes of conservation or
Yeah.
access.
But stewardship, as Mr. Bokey pointed out, is kind of the, the lingo in the conservation futures opportunities where third-party nonprofits can coordinate with the county and buy them and then turn them over to somebody like the city of Lakewood for stewardship under a recorded stewardship agreement for public purpose.
And I would just say that, that we have done that. For instance, we've increased our stewardship and, and in fact, our ownership of the shorelines of Wardslake.
Correct.
You know, you know, so, so we've been able to, to, to go and do that. And I think we should be very clear that our policy is wherever that's possible to, to work, to work, work, work towards it. But I do agree with that there, there, there are some snippets of shoreline in places that maybe keeping them is is, is, is futile in, in that they're not going to contribute to conservation or anything else. Um, but I'd like to be proactive in terms of making sure that if, if we're going to eliminate one of them, that it's done while we're also somewhere adding things to it.
Sounds like you've got what you need maybe to tweak NE 3. Adding the language of stewardship to concept.
Um, where I would take it based on what I've heard this evening is for NE 3.4. Um, it would be the increased city ownership and stewardship of shorelines and shorelands. Um, I'll just clarify the reason there's language suggested for NE 7.2 uh, was that city staff was thinking that water quality would be preserved if the city is owning, um, that property, uh, if, rather than a private parcel or, or private party or, or business. So the thought there is just by having it owned by the city, the likelihood of water quality remaining
City ownership.
The same, if not better.
Or management, whatever you want to put it in.
Sure, yeah. But we, we can certainly take the 7.2 away if that's not the will of the group. So if, if you are okay with me taking another stab and bringing it back next week.
You guys okay with that?
Okay, thank you.
Good to go? Well, thank you. Good, good discussion on that. Next change that you want to bring to our attention?
Yeah, the, the other one would be on the following page of the staff report or page 204 of the whole packet. Sorry. And I went right past it. Okay. So there was conversation both last year and this year regarding short-term rentals.
Yep.
Um, first of all, Planning Commission has recommended once again to allow them within accessory dwelling units, but this is the new language that also provides, uh, increased, um, oversight by the city of how short-term rentals might be administered, managed in the city. And so what you see there is 18A 40090 is the section where this new language would be. All of the underlined language is new. The highlighted part is in reaction to comments that for sure council member Pearson, and I don't know, I can't recall if anyone else has brought this up as well, but, um, his comment was to increase from one, uh, STR permit in, uh, the city for each permutee to up to five. But that is again, up, up for discussion if, uh, different number is requested or no change or et cetera.
Just so we're clear, uh, each individual STR would have an individual permit, all right?
Correct, correct.
Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and, and I threw out five as just a, something that makes more sense than one, but ultimately I don't really know where this is coming from or why. I mean, I've heard that we, you know, the idea is that you don't want a national company to come in and have a whole bunch of short-term rentals, but I mean, is that the worst thing in the world that could happen is someone, you know, builds a bunch of ADUs and now we've got a bunch of ADUs and people might use them for short-term rentals, but guess what? If we have 4,000 ADUs in Lakewood, they're not all going to be rented out that way and they might turn into affordable housing. So, you know, it is, I, I don't know if there's any real cap that, I just don't, nothing is coming to me as like a really big issue that, uh, it's not like we have like a market that's gonna justify a million ADUs and it's going to be a problem, or short-term rentals and it's going to be a problem. So I, I, I threw out five because one seems crazy, but I, I, it could, you could totally strike it out and not have any limits at all, and I'd be fine with that, or, or bump it up to 10 or 20. I mean, I don't really have uh, an issue with, I, I had an issue with just one. So, but I'd prefer to have either no limit or 10 or 20. I mean, something that if, if someone wanted to do business in Lakewood and, and they had four or five, you know, properties and each one of them had a couple of ADUs on it, it's like, okay, that doesn't have to be a national company. That could be a, a local developer that wants to invest in Lakewood and, and now they can't be, have more than three properties with two ADUs on each of them. That's not an unfathomable amount of ADUs. So, you know, 10, 20, or just remove that entirely would be kind of what I'm asking, I guess. What the temperature is.
Mr. Bokey, can I, can I ask a question? I think you mentioned Gig Harbor has limits, but do most cities have limits now, or is this just like Gig Harbor or where are we at?
The research that I have done focused on Gig Harbor, I can certainly do some additional research in the coming week, but the reason they had it there was as a city with significant shoreline and uh, this was put in place a few years ago where they didn't really know how the market was going to continue to expand. They were concerned about having more than one owned by any particular permutee. Um, if you want to compare Gig Harbor shoreline to Lakewood's have added, I don't know how much that's going to be, uh, comparable or not, but this, the staff does not have any strong opinion one way or the other on this.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, it makes sense to have something reasonable. This seems to be reasonable. Otherwise you're going to get people that are going to do workarounds, right? So you're going to have LLC 1, LLC 2, LLC 3, LLC 4, and each has a permit, separate ownership. Some wily lawyer might think something like that up.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with Mr. Pearson that I, I don't see a need to have any limitation on them at this point and let the market drive what happens.
So you'd be okay with at least a suggestion of five, just for throwing something in there, or do you prefer none?
I think I would prefer none. Yeah. Yeah, strike the whole thing.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay. So I will remove this then. Would you like me to remove the entire sub three then? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. That will be the way it shows up next week then. Thanks. And unless.
Mr. Bransdeter had a quick one there.
Before we leave the, the STR function, as we were making the, the, the changes here and going back to our discussions about this. And I know we've said that, that, that you have to have a business license. So you apply for a business license and you do that. But if we put any clarification in there about, um, whether there are any lodging tax fees that are or what triggers an STR having to collect lodging tax fees?
I don't recall specific language regarding lodging tax fees. This is within the lodging section of our code, uh, but I don't know that that automatically results in the lodging tax fees.
Cause, cause I, cause, I, I guess that there was something in the code that, that talked about. I don't know. The, the, these seem to be something that would I don't know if, if it's, if you, if you, if you rent an STR for three days, whether it's like a motel room, whether that should generate lodging tax fees or whether the opposite is true. If you, if you, what happens if you occupy an STR for over 30 days? Is it, as it, does it become some other sort of a, of, of, of an entity to be able to go and do that? And I, I, I just would maybe it's not here, but I'd sort of like to see where that's clear in terms of what is, uh, uh, done and, 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 and when an STR transitions to some other sort of lodging.
By definition, a short-term rental is 30 days or less. So anytime a rental were to be longer than 30 days, it would no longer be short-term. It would be a regular rental property, which would have to follow all of the other rental, um, requirements that are in our code and in state business licensing requirements.
Okay. So would it be of value to us to specifically say that, that short-term rentals will not go to a single occupant for more than 30 days?
That's in the code. It's, that's how it's defined.
Okay. I, I guess it wasn't in, it's, that's just not an amendment that we're looking at here and?
It's defined in 18A 10. It, it says, this is what a short-term rental is, and it is for anything for less than 30 days. So throughout 18A 40, it's already been defined.
Hmm. Okay, thank you.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other requested amendments.
Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have, I've been talking about this a few times and I still have some concerns about what's going to happen with R1 and R2 zoning as it relates to the increased densities and then being able to stack on some, some low-income units and ADUs and how many structures, dwelling units could be on a, on a single lot and and I, I, I guess I just, um, in, in those zones where you know, those are unique zones in, in Lakewood and they have been for a long time. You know, there's not a lot of areas in the Puget Sound and in the, certainly in the UGA and in cities where you have, you know, older, larger, larger lots of a half an acre, a third of an acre, an acre. And it really is unique and it's really, you know, we have a lot of, of, of canopy space in those areas in Lakewood and we're trying to, you know, retain our canopy, um, by the states wanting to promote this high density, you know, lots of, uh, of, um, low-income units and I would be, I guess, it would be nice if we had something that provided a bit more, you know, certainty that, that that wouldn't happen as much in those kind of zones where there's heavy tree canopies, um, or if it's R1 and R2, can we, can, can we increase like, you know, the open space requirements or reduce the impervious surface requirements or, you know, kind of come combat that a little bit that, that allows us to keep those areas like they've been zoned and like they've been lived in for decades, you know? Um, I, I just, if I owned a house over there in the R1, R2 areas and a neighbor decided to, you know what, we're going to build a bunch of units and rent them all out and do this and that. And then you're, you know, you're like, whoa, you guys cut down all your trees, you did this and that. And now there's all this more traffic on these old narrow roads where there's not much right of way and, you know, you can't really make people put in parking and these, these things with the new ADA rules and like, it just kind of daisy chains into this, all this congestion and all this additional where it's not really been planned for in the past. And those things make more sense in the downtown area where we can accommodate higher densities, where we can provide transportation. There's all, you know, so how can we kind of combat some of those things that are intended consequences from the state, but I think really unintended in my opinion for what we want to do in Lakewood?
The best way I can answer you, Councilmember Pearson, is exactly what you're asking about is exactly what the legislature is trying to prevent. They are trying to say those areas that have been historically lower densities in cities, it's time to change that and allow additional housing and additional types of housing in those areas. And so the idea of having, uh, middle housing and accessory dwelling units within the traditional single-family homes is exactly what they're trying to do. And they have stated in, uh, their bills, not only you need to allow, you must allow these types of units or this many units, but you also cannot do anything to your regulations to make them harder to build than a single-family detached home in those areas. So, um, the, the specific purpose is to allow for more housing in these areas that in the past have been lower density. Having said that, what's in the city's code in front of you right now does limit density if there's a critical area or it's buffer on a, on a lot. So not all R1 properties are going to have the same amount of available density on them. If there is a critical area, which could include an oak tree stand, right? Because oak tree stands are considered critical areas in our city code as well. Um, or there's a buffer that would limit potentially to where there's no subdivision or no densification allowed, or it would be less than otherwise would be the case. The other thing that dictates how much can be done is the actual square footage of the lot. So if you're in R1 or R2, but you have differing size of a lot, that can also limit or increase the number of units you can do. Um, the third piece I'll say is that not as part of this project or this, uh, packet in front of you, but part of next year's 25 comp plan amendment cycle is specific to regulations on middle housing, um, types. And so that is going to be a refinement of the code that's coming forward and looking to see, to make sure it's exactly what, um, must happen under state law, but also is responsive to maybe some of what you're asking for tonight. But again, it, it's, uh, a state legislature that is trying to specifically do the changes that you're, you're expressing concern about.
On, on his point, do we have something in our code, or should we, that incorporates the language in the state legislation that basically exempted those neighborhoods, including some in R1 and R2 that have pre-existing recorded covenants restricting single-family dwelling only usage on their lots?
Uh, we could certainly incorporate into the code the language that says if this is something that is pre-1969 and is not racially based, et cetera, et cetera. Um, there's language in the state statute that recognizes those. Yes, we could add that in.
I think it was more than. I think it was more than nineteen, pre nineteen sixty-nine. I think it was anything that was in place prior to the effective date of the state law.
Yeah.
Could've been two years ago.
Yeah.
Yep. Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you. Uh, I had a question on number seven on this page, just for clarification. It says, "All off-street parking required for the primary use of the site shall be made available to guests." Talking short-term rentals still. Does that mean for a given house, if they've got an ADU they're using for a short-term rental, the primary residence parking must be made available to the ADU? Yeah, so it says, "All off-street parking required for the primary use of the site shall be made available to guests." So is site defined as the primary residence on that parcel, or is it something else?
If it is not a subdivided lot, then the site is the parcel, which would include the primary residence as well as the ADU.
So in this case, we're saying that the driveway of the homeowner is required to be made available to people staying in the ADU as a short-term rental?
Correct.
I'll make sure I understood that and make sure that's our intent.
Anyone else? Nope. Mr. Branser. Yes, there was someone else.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and sure. And I can't find where, what I'm concerned about is, is being documented, but we talked about, first of all, there was, there were, there, there was an action regarding residential target areas that we act-in on, sent back to the planning commission, was gonna come back to us, but then didn't come back to us because it was gonna go. So is there, is there, is there some action regarding changing residential target areas that's in this overall plan we're getting ready to adopt, or is that still a future?
Uh, Councilmember, from what I understand, either it already happened on August twenty-sixth or it's been rescheduled. There is going to be a study session with council where you give direction to the staff that are taking the lead on the RTA amendments to say, this is the kind of, um, issues or questions you want answered by the planning commission. Once that study session with you is complete, it will go to this planning commission, and then a separate recommendation will come back to you. So it's not part of this package.
Part of a comprehensive plan action?
Correct.
Okay, okay. My, 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 my other question is, we've been sort of focusing around street ends and things to do that. And we have always historically restricted our consideration of street ends to street ends that were, um, on bodies of water that were in the shoreline management program. And now we've expanding that to, uh, another eight or ten bodies of water that are, uh, located throughout the cities, smaller bottles of water, Boil Lake and, uh, uh, some, some ponds and, and, and some things there. So do we have an inventory of, in, in, now that we've rolled those in, of so whether there is any public property, be it a street end or a, um, stormwater collection site, the, on, on, on any of those properties that would factor into what we previously discussed about, um, shoreline and water access? Or is that something we would need to do in terms of looking at that?
I'm not aware of any such inventory, um, and so I will verify that. And maybe next week, the council could include that in the package if that's not been done, direction to the department to start such a work.
Okay, and then the, 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 the last thing is that I thought there was somewhere in the planning commission's recommendations about within the downtown area changing something about the size or areas of where planned development of activities could take place. And it, it's, it's sort of something that, 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 that came up and we, we talked about. When we first did the downtown area plan, we had some districts in it of where we were targeting them for mixed-use development, where we wanted the programs to be development within those areas to be mixed-use, okay? Uh, being able to go and do that, and there were some overlays, uh, in that, uh, I thought. And then we got, but that if, if it was a planned development parcel, it was exempt from that requirement to be mixed-use, such as what is gonna happen over here behind the Barnes and Noble. So what are the changes that relate to that mix of, 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 of requirements in the downtown plan of where mixed-use is a requirement? And where, uh, planned developments that would supersede the requirement for mixed-use are gonna be permitted?
No changes are, are proposed for what would be required of mixed-use or not mixed-use other than the, uh, package in front of you this evening and will be in front of you next week for action includes an amendment under title eighteen B that says, rather than a ten-acre minimum and just being limited to the town center overlay, master plan developments in the downtown are at five-acre minimum and can be anywhere in the downtown. So it's, it's reducing the minimum size and expanding where they could happen.
Okay, so I'm concerned that that change sounds counterproductive. If, uh, if, 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 if having a planned development area of ten acres allows this development here over in the area behind the Barnes and Nobles to then, um, not have to be mixed-use, which is what we were hoping for, that to reduce the size of a location from ten acres to five acres will just take more places of where we were hoping for mixed-use and the resultant increase in jobs, potentially to, to also be an unintended consequence of, 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 of doing that. So I'm, I, I guess that I would, if ten acres is, 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 is what is currently there, and that's what is happening with the alliance project, where they, 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 they're gonna go, go to that. And so that, that, then they, they don't have to be mixed-use because they're operating under those rules for a planned development parcel. And, 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 and thus the, the, the mandatory mixed-use development on the site is not there. That if we reduce the size of sites that that's allowed to happen from ten acres to five, we'll see more sites that we were hoping to be mixed-use that won't be. And so, you know, I guess that I would like to see an amendment that doesn't include that reduction, reduction from ten acres to five. Um, and I realize it's, it's not all that easy to put together ten acres, but it'll be easier to put together five. But we're trying to incentivize mixed-use development for the purposes of both jobs and, and housing. And quite frankly, I'm not at all, at all worried about our meeting of twenty forty housing targets. Uh, you, we're seeing housing being developed through, throughout the city, uh, you know, being able to go and do that. What we're not seeing is jobs being created throughout the city at the rate that we wanted. Uh, and, and, and mixed-use developments are, 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 while, while they're gonna get us housing, they're, they're, uh, in foremost, they're, 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 they're making the key link between more housing and more jobs, to be able to go and do that.
Where, where's this proposed language in the packet?
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's, um, going to be at the very end of your attachment relating to development regulations, is title eighteen B.
Okay, because I looked in the, in the audit for eighteen B and I didn't see it, and so.
It would be toward the end because the majority of the changes are in, uh, eighteen A. But the actual page where eighteen B would be discussed prior to the audit would be, um, pretty close to where the audit starts.
The development code downtown.
So where they, i- 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 but is the intent to reduce it from ten to five only in the downtown area?
Correct.
Okay, so, so I, so I guess that I would, not be in favor of that, and so it's, to, to, to amend the packet, to look at us, to do that, or at least know where that is so that I can propose amending it if, when we're, if, when we're dealing with it next week.
If I were able to open it right now, Mr. Branser, I'd give you the, the site.
Yeah, I, I just couldn't find it in the thousand pages that I was looking through.
Mr. Pearson, I'm looking in ten B two or eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, five acres is still a large chunk of property to pull together, um, especially when you look in the downtown area. And, uh, you know, the, I don't know if there really is so much of a, a link to mixed-use development and new jobs as it is mixed-use development and commercial retail space, which may or may not be vacant. So there's a lot of commercial real estate and commercial spaces that are not being used, quite frankly. And if we can get some more housing that takes out the way, I, Mr. Combs on the planning commission has talked about this topic in great depth, and he's really knowledgeable on how, um, you know, the money behind it all works. But basically, the mixed-use is subsidized by how much housing you can get in there. And so, you know, if they can make the number of units work, then you just kind of say, okay, yeah, we can get this project to pen, to pencil out. So it's not like they're counting on all this amount of money from the commercial retail spaces and stuff below, uh, actually being rented out. There's, there's a lot of spaces that, that aren't rented out. And having, you know, fifty units or twenty units or whatever, um, makes that pencil. So i- if we can allow for some more really good housing projects to come in, I, I, I think that that's, that's a reasonable ask. Um, and, and I'd be definitely for the, the five-acre staying in there as well as expanding it to the whole downtown rather than the town center. So that's my thoughts on that.
I'd like to see where it is and have us discuss that impact briefly, because I've.
I'm gonna jump up to the desk just a moment.
Yeah, you're fine. I think it's, for me, not just housing or jobs, it's livability. Because I, I really enjoy those communities that have a pretty vibrant mixed-use feel, especially in areas where they're traditionally retail, or there have been business or adjacent to sidewalks for walkability. Um, and I think it's, in certain areas, you're right, Mr. Pearson, it's been challenging to see some of that take place. But then you look at University Place, they're doing really well with that mixed-use center in there. Um, I, you know, I currently work in downtown Auburn, and there's a lot of mixed-use projects, a lot of vacancies. Um, but there are spaces there, and I think it will take hold. But it certainly creates an opportunity for a lot more vibrant living in those areas than if it was just housing, um, in my opinion. So that's just me, the guy who travels a lot and sees a lot of communities. You know, e- even my office building downtown Tacoma, it was part of the LID that was done in the theater district in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, right when the market kind of fell. And the beauty of that area was, it was mixed-use. And even though our building was a condominium with a residential-owned condos up top, they had a commercial down below, happened to be a law firm, another one happened to be a high-end sort of spa, and they've now developed in two other locations. But that created that really cool vibe down there, where you had some good mixed-use in areas that were dense with residential. It gave amenities for people who are living there to enjoy. That's my thought, and I hear you though on the housing piece. Yeah, go ahead.
And, and I don't think that we're losing that. We're still talking about a really large a- area that needs to be developed to even reach these goals. So five acres is a substantial, uh, uh, you know, chunk of property to be able to get out of doing mixed-use. I think that we're still going to get a lot of mixed-use, everything under five acres, you know, that's, should be mixed-use. So a couple of big, bigger, you know, multifamily projects to kind of fill in some blocks, mixed with mixed-use. I think that's, you know, it's a good balance of, okay, this is a sizable enough project to provide lots of good housing. Anything smaller than that, you're doing mixed-use, and you're gonna kind of chain them together. But, you know, keeping it at ten acres is virtually, nothing is ever gonna be anything not mixed-use. And so I think that we're missing the boat on getting some really nice projects. And, and there may not be many of them. There still isn't gonna be a lot of them. Five acres is still a big chunk of real estate to develop. So I, I think that if we can have a few of them, you know, mixed in with the rest of the mixed-use, I think that, you know, that would kind of tie things in and, and, and really help hit the housing goals. So the housing goals are, I think, the, the most important goals to be hitting and working towards. It's the easiest ones to sell, it's the easiest ones to fill. And if we can get a, you know, a few more of those, I think that we'd be doing ourselves and the community a, a favor.
And the final word is, is that I am sort of at the opposite end of the spectrum from Mr. Pearson, because I think that the jobs goals are more important than the housing goals. Recognizing that we're talking about a plan that has a twenty-year horizon and to make this change right now, because some in the development community think that in the short term they can fund housing more easily than they can mixed-use, is getting us away from what we want to do. And we were developing the downtown area plan. We were very focused on wanting to create a downtown. And a downtown is not a patchwork of small mixed-use areas in, spread, you know, in, in, amongst multifamily housing units to be able to go and do that. And it also, and it also included having parks and things like that. And mixed-use was beyond commercial retail, but it included looking to get some class A or class B office space, uh, down here to be able to go and do that. And some of those things are actually more doable if you have a, some more sizable piece of property than do that. I mean, the, the last mixed-use project that we had in the downtown is over on Bristol. Okay, and it's got two offices and, 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 and eight apartments because it's on a small piece of, of property that, you know, that, that you could, if I, if I go to, um, and the last place I went is, if I go to, go, go, go to, go to Vancouver, okay? You know, they had a, like a twenty-acre thing over there that they have developed totally with mixed-use, both apartments and, and, and mixed-use things there, um, you know, along their waterfront, being able to go and do that. If you go down to Ruston, okay? They wouldn't have been able to do Ruston if they were trying to do that on small parcels. Um, and I think that we could, if we put a plan together, that'll get us to what our vision for a downtown is and our vision for people having jobs that'll raise the overall ability of, and, 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 wherewithal of the residents of Lakewood. Uh, it, it, the, the key to that is jobs, okay? Um, not a lot of apartments for people to, 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 to commute to other places or to be, use their, use, you, 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 use their home for, 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 for at-home work. Um, I think we're, um- so it's so it's a bit, if you know, if we were talking about what can we get done in the next three years, maybe this change appeals to somebody that is wants to come in and do that, but once you build in a in a in a in a multifamily-only, large development, that's what it's gonna stay. You know, it's not, it doesn't, and and if that's not what our long-term vision is for a downtown, um, that's a mix of mixed-use and parks and 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 other things. And then we 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 shouldn't be incentivizing that by reducing that print from ten to five, I'd so. But I understand that that's a different view than some and particularly from some people who are in the development community that see one is easier than the other to do.
Well, unfortunately, we haven't had much mixed-use development here despite our best efforts, we at least have two small offices on Bristol, but that wasn't quite what we were focused on when we did this a few years back, yeah.
And Mister Mayor, if I could, the language that you see here on Attachment F, which is actually the last page of the packet, is that it's saying that you don't follow with a master plan development agreement the exact strict language in the ordinance or in the code. That does not mean that a project is necessarily released from a requirement to incorporate mixed-use. Meaning there could be in the negotiations between the city and a project proponent that requirement. Um, so it's it's somewhat similar to the discussion that the council has regarding MFTE projects. It has to go, quote, above and beyond code, uh, to to be given the MFTE status. And maybe that is something that you would want to look at as well as part of the next round of amendments to the, um, eighteen B in twenty twenty-five, but the intent here was simply to respond to um, what has been heard by the, uh, staff from potential developers who have said, I can't do anything that large. Here's my questions for you, and also after looking at the twenty twenty-four biennial review of the sub-area plan and how much activity has occurred in it since twenty eighteen. Um, this was an idea that city, uh, staff felt was reasonable, but that's where it came from.
Very good, I think we can noodle on that a little bit before we have to pass it. Anything else from Miss Spear? Anything else for us?
Not from me, Mister Mayor.
Do you need any other consensus on any of the items other than what you've heard tonight?
If no one is voicing anything tonight, I'm assuming what is in the current draft is what you're comfortable taking action on next week. So I hear the changes requested regarding short-term rentals, regarding shoreline and shoreline preservation, and then something to do with the master plan developments, we'll chew on something there to provide maybe some options.
Okay, very good. Any else to go to the order on that? Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
The end, you you see the light at the end of a tunnel? Okay, so we see the items tentatively scheduled for the September sixteen regular city council meeting. I'm not sure that all of them will appear on the September sixteenth agenda, but this is what currently is proposed. Now we'll turn to reports by Mister Coffield.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, just a few updates for you. Remember last week? I alerted you that the, um, Lakewood Community Foundation is looking for a representative from the city council to sit on the Larry Saunders award recognition committee, and I was talking to Councilmember Laura Sella and he's interested in doing it, and so unless there's any objection from the council. So Councilmember Laura Sella, you're 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 in. Also, just wanted to report that our Assistant Police Chief was recently appointed to the state's Public Safety Review Panel, um, as the law enforcement representative from from WASPIC, the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chief. And what they do is they provide recommendations to the courts on the releases from both eastern state and western state hospitals. And so A.C. Enford saw this opportunity and jumped all over it, particularly given uh, we've never had anybody on this panel, um, and given that we have Western State Hospital in our backyard, so he thought it would be advantageous to take advantage of that opportunity, that window, if you will, and, um, we learned late last week that he's been appointed, so, um, good reflection on him, uh, for taking the initiative and also you know, having some say there in terms of, uh, who does get released from Western State Hospital, it is a panel of seven. Um, but still, um, good opportunity for Lakewood. At your meeting next week, uh, we're gonna be coming forward with an ordinance I I would describe really quite frankly as a housekeeping amendment. Um, it has to do with, um, our parks code and incorporating a definition of special events into the code. It's not something that we have, uh, where this came from is every year, you know, as part of our um, risk assessment audit with Washington City's Insurance Audit Authority, they select one or two areas that they look into. In two thousand twenty-three, it was our special events program. Long story short, they were very, very impressed and pleased um, in terms of how we run all of our programs, particularly from a risk management standpoint. Though the one area that they didn't see in our code was just really a definition of what a special event is, and so um, we figured that we would bring that back to you, so we're doing that to you for you at your meeting, um, next, uh, next, next Monday. A couple of project updates, so if you drive by American Lake Park, you'll see that it's fenced off. So the city's contractor, you know, the city awarded a four-point, actually the four-point-two million dollar total project cost, um, last, I think it was in June or so, and so now that the summer season is over, uh, the contractor is, uh, down there and getting ready to move forward with ADA improvements, uh, from the parking lot down to the beach and to other areas there, as well as new restrooms and some community areas and um, also some work down on the bulkhead and wide range of improvements, um, so again, that work is kicking off right now. And it's anticipated to be completed by April or May of of two thousand twenty-five in time for the park to reopen for, uh, the summer of two thousand twenty-five.
Well, Mister Pearson has a question.
Thank you, uh, Mister Coffield, does is the boat launch closed as well?
No, Councilmember, the boat launch will remain open.
Thank you.
Yeah, now if the contractor has some issues or needs something, then he may have to temporarily close it, but right now it it'll remain open. Um, in a lock and bridge, uh, that project is moving on, as a matter of fact, as of this afternoon, uh, the city's contractor finished the lifting part of the bridge where they actually lift it up and replace, um, all the pile caps and the the stringers. Um, and so that work has all been completed, so now they're on to replacing, you know, all the guardrails, all the posts and the uh, the curb sections, the timber curb sections that are on there, then they'll do all the re-striping and 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 signage and all of that, so right now the goal is for that bridge to be open, well, actually, it will be open by the end of September. Uh, but it could it could occur sooner, um, and a lot of times with some of the work that they have left to do, it is a little weather-dependent. Um, but again, things are, things are moving forward on that. Um, and speaking of weather-dependent, uh, Hipkins Road, um, the last phase of that, the 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 work on the water main is finishing up and, um, next week, uh, mid-week next week, again, weather-dependent, they hope to begin doing the paving um, on that and then get that roadway completely opened up by the end of September into the early or middle part of October, so that's where we are there, and the detouring seems to be working very well throughout, um, that part of the city as well. Um, and then as it relates to your calendar, um, just a, um, finally a reminder on some updates here, so on Wednesday, a couple of things happening. At one P M., the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a special ribbon-cutting ceremony, uh, celebrating the opening of the interim library down at Gravity Lake Drive in Alpharetta, and I know the mayor and deputy mayor and council, you're all invited to to attend that, and then the Pierce County Library System, they will then be opening the interim library to the public the following day on Thursday, September, September twelfth. Um, later that evening is the nine-elevens, nine-eleven remembrance ceremony, uh, down at West Pierce Fire and Rescue District's headquarters building in University Place, and that kicks off at five thirty P M. On Thursday, from four thirty to six over at the pavilion at Fort Silicon Park, we're gonna have our annual volunteer recognition event, and we're expected to have fifty-plus folks there, if not more. Uh, members of your boards and commissions, one of them was here this evening, um, and so, um, just again, wanted to give you a heads up on that, and then a week from, uh, tonight, in advance of your council meeting, we'll be having the final um, Lakewood Artist Reception of two thousand twenty-four, it's gonna feature a couple of local artists, Sylvia um, Estrella and Laurie Davenport, and that'll be from five to seven right out front here, a little bit of music, some snacks, um, and an opportunity just to see some 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 great, great artwork, and, uh, that's done in conjunction with the Arts Commission. Um, also, um, as a follow-up to the first desserts on the driveway, um, which is again a new way to connect with the community. Um, in the middle part of this month, um, there'll be two more, the first one is on Wednesday, September eighteenth at six thirty P M. And that'll be at the Tillican Community Center, and then the third one will be on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth over at in Lake City at the location of the former elementary school that's over there. And then, um, in case you hadn't heard, on Saturday, September twenty-eighth from four to seven P M., Partners for Parks is hosting a Harvest Hoedown um, in support of the H Barn fundraising that they're doing, um, down, uh, in the vicinity in and around the H Barns. So and if you have an interest in 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 attending that, they have a a sign up and a and a and a link that we provided to you if you if you wish if you wish to attend. So, um, Mayor, that's my report.
So then the next dessert on the driveway thing is actually at the community center on Wednesday, the eighteenth, six to seven.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay, sorry about that.
It should be on your calendar.
Uh, I didn't see yet, but could be on my city calendar, so. Yep, Mister Pearson, yep.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, Mister Coffield, is there the, uh, the the Lake City property, um, desserts in the driveway? It'd be nice if we reached out to the school district on that one, I think, and maybe was able to harbor some energy about potentially doing something there, um, to get people out on the site to look at it and you know, see what it's about, see what the community there is about and be able to, you know, hear some I I'm sure that they would love to voice their opinions to the city and the school district, and that'd be, I think, great to get some people there.
Pass it on, Councilmember.
Appreciate it.
Anything else for Mister Coffield on that? I had a quick question for you, speaking of events and projecting forward, I don't recall when we typically do a Thornwood event for the two-two, the new leadership, is that something we want to think about putting together?
Yeah, absolutely, as a matter of fact, that's on our list to reach out to the two-two and, um, try and identify some dates in November or December, so.
Very good, it'll be here before we know it.
I had mentioned it to Colonel Gallo recently when I saw him as well.
Okay, great, very good, thank you. All right, well, if not, digestion, Mister Bokey. We'll we'll turn to council comments, be mindful, we do have an executive session after this, so we'll start with Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I'll be brief, uh, looking forward to the farmer's market tomorrow, I will be at the ribbon cutting on Wednesday. Uh, I'm gonna try and make it to the nine-eleven remembrance, uh, thing Wednesday night, and then Friday, I'll be participating in the Pierce County Climate Conversation, representing City Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I just wanted to say that I had, um, a fantastic time at the Fiesta de la Familia this weekend, and so I thought that that was just a phenomenal event and you can really see how it has grown year after year, and it's just an amazing event, and then I wanted to re-mention that the arts reception will be next Monday from five to seven out front, some really great pieces. Um, I think someone from actually on the Arts Commission has some of her pieces out there, so it'll be really cool to see. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I too attended the Fiesta de la Familia, and that was a pretty pretty cool event to go to, um, met with the the Mexican consulate uh, there and got to watch the horses dance and the people dance and the music, and it was, it was a pretty, pretty cool event. Um, I've got a, uh, Tillicum Woodbrook Community, uh, visit tomorrow and then, um, try to get to the volunteer and these other things later this week if time permitted. Um, and then I I I wanted to, uh, just commend city staff for their you know, making Lakewood not the epitome of of government in the sense that it takes forever to do things and and we executed a contract and got a contractor selected. They got the bridge done, they selected competent contractor, it appears. And, you know, that was a really well-executed operation, and if you remember looking back on the Lakewood life and all these city comments and I'll I'll believe it when I see it, and this is never gonna happen in three or four months, and look what's happening, so, you know, I think that it sounded like that they've accomplished all of the in-water work, which that was the big deal, right, getting all of the water, in-water work done before the window, and so if there's just some you know, some, um, some punchless items to wrap up, you know, that sounds like that was accomplished, so I just wanted to give them a shout out, and that was a job well done, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good, Councilmember Branstadter.
I'm good, Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, Fiesta de Familia was wonderful, um, the weather cooperated too, and I do appreciate the counselor official coming down. Um, and he and his wife taking time in in their busy schedule to come down here, and I've just really impressed with the event. Um, I'm gonna try to make the library opening. The day job may get in the way, but it's if it's at one, I thought it was a little earlier, so if it's at one, I should be able to make that. Um, the Harvest Hoedown, did that get canceled? Where that got canceled, the Partners for Parks, the H Barn, I have that on the twenty-eighth.
I still have it down, yeah.
Okay, is it still on?
I'm supposed to M C the things, I think it's still on. I haven't been told otherwise, but.
Um, I don't know why, maybe I saw something on social media about it. Um, shape on Friday morning and we'll go from there. Oh, is anybody gonna go see Brew? Are you going to see Bruce Kendall's thing tomorrow night at four? Are you going, Mister? Is anybody from the city going?
Councilmember Bokey, um, unfortunately, I won't be able to attend, or if I do, it'll be the latter end of it, but, um, Economic Development Manager Becky Newton is gonna be attending, and unless there's representation from the city council, she's gonna present Mister Kendall with your proclamation.
Yeah, I don't know that I'll be able to make it, I certainly can't make it at four, so, uh, okay, thank you, that's all I got, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Thank Deputy Mayor, you're next.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I can be very brief. I enjoyed Sa- Saturday, it's particularly the horses did the dance, and that was just amazing. So, and I would I would love to see them when they're training those horses to do that, how they get them to to rhythm with the music, I mean, it was amazing, and I will miss the next two meetings, so that's all I have.
Okay. Well, you will be missed. I too enjoyed the Fiesta de la Familia event on Saturday, it was really well done. Uh, made a nice connection with the consul, uh, from the consulate. Tremendous young man, his wife, uh, they do some great work up there, it would be nice to invite them perhaps down to one of our other events, I don't know if it's appropriate to invite folks like that, maybe to the two-two Striker Brigade event if we do it, but it's a nice way to connect people, and they may really appreciate that, they were kind of fascinated by our two-two connection, if you will, to Joint Base Lewis McCord, and they thought that that was kind of fabulous, especially given that so many people come to this area from some sort of military connection, that's what made up the diversity, I was talking about how diverse Lakewood is, much of it because of the historical military connections over the course of time. So might be a nice thing to do down the road. Uh, that was Saturday, uh, this is going to be a busy week, as we've all heard, the various items on the calendar, I'm gonna try to attend Mister Kendall's retirement celebration tomorrow if I can, and then we do have the events on Wednesday, I will be at the ribbon cutting. Um, and I will try to be at the nine-eleven remembrance ceremony, I don't require, I don't recall, rather, whether there is an R S V P required on that, or is it just show up as best we can to the nine-eleven? Okay, very good. I will do that as best I can, and then the volunteer recognition event on Thursday, I will be there. And then I think we don't have anything in particular on the weekend this time, so good. All right, well, uh, thanks to staff for great reports tonight. The city council will now recess into executive session for approximately thirty minutes pursuant to R C W forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, sub G to review the performance of a public employee. And the council is not expected to take any action following this executive session other than to come back and adjourn this meeting. So we will now be in recess. Thank you.